Okay, let's go ahead and start. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Chris Head?
Present.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Present.
Mitch Magnus?
Present.
Linda DeWolfe?
Present.
Yay, Linda!
Bill Boswell? Present. Heath Kirkpatrick?
Present.
Joel Williams?
Present.
Wayne Cowan?
Present.
Do you have a quorum?
Okay, Pastor, pray forth, please.
You stand with me for the opening prayer and then the mayor lead us in the pledge. God, we thank you so much for your grace. Lord, through these difficult times, God, with so much illness, it reminds us of just how weak we are. God, we need to rely upon your strength and your wisdom. Lord, continue to protect us and watch over us. God, may we grow closer together and more thankful for our health and for our families and for the area we live in, God, for all those who serve this city. God, give us wisdom tonight to represent the people with integrity and everything we do in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America as to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Be seated, please. All right, need a motion to approve the council minutes of... Okay, we got a motion, Mary Jean, and we'll give that second to Joel. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? Okay. Chief Grady, are you with us?
He is.
He's coming? I think he's walking down the hall.
I'm here.
All right.
All right. Does anybody need one of these that does not have one or has it electronically? All right. I was telling Councilman Magnus earlier, I've got about three different individuals that I'd kind of like to bring in and showcase, but until we get through this virus threat, I just really don't want to do that. So basically, I've got the monthly report. I'll keep it short and sweet. First page, accidents worked, 27 for the month. Year-to-date was 321. Same period last year is 319. Citations issued, 139. Year-to-date, 1810. Same period last year, 3027. Warnings was 207. Year-to-date, 2694. Same period last year is 5818. Calls for service, 1,194. Year-to-date, 13,398. Same period last year, 19,155. Next page, school resource officers. Counseling with students, nine. With parents and adults, nine. Had 14 lectures and through our special events, the games. There were 17 events that our officers attended for that. That's... With everything going on, it's a struggle, but they're getting through it. And I think it's working out fairly well so far. Warrants served for the month of October on the next page was 40. Year-to-date's 1,348. Next page, calls answered for animal control was 76. Year-to-date, 848. If you'll go to page three of the CID report. Cases worked, year-to-date is 27 and closed is two. Same period last time's 25 worked and 20 closed. Next page, community engagement officer. Thirty-three local businesses were contacted, 1,500 people was reached. Once again, that's another limited... We'd like to see more, but under the conditions, we just don't. Last page is narcotics report. And if you remember last month, we mentioned the large raid that the county and the city and the DTF had. That's the results of that is on this report. So drug seized, we seized marijuana, methamphetamine, THC wax, THC cartridges, LSD, and some mushrooms. Total value of narcotics was $6,680 worth of meth, $590,000 worth of marijuana, $298,000 worth of wax, $9,600 worth of THC cartridges, $200 on the mushrooms. And that totaled $905,135. We had 13 felonies arrested and three misdemeanor charges. Currency seized was $14,000. Seventy-two guns, three vehicles, three four-wheelers, and two motorcycles. That pretty well wraps up our month of October. You have any questions? It was a busy month.
I have a few questions, but I mentioned this to the chief, and I briefly mentioned it to Mary Jean in the last... Committee, and I'm going to be speaking quite a bit tonight, so I want to limit this as much as I can. Something occurred that I was a witness to right down here, and I called the chief about it. We see that generally the motto of the police department is to protect and defend. We see a lot of protection at times. That night, there were two young police officers down here. It was obvious there was a woman and an older woman that was having difficulty. And I watched for seven to eight minutes, timed it. The kindness and compassion that they showed showed true service. And so people don't often see that. So I wanted to... I mentioned it to the chief. He said he was going to do something. He's found his head there, but he's embarrassed partly by it, but it's true. Those are the people he had working on.
They were both recognized, and I told them I appreciate their service. So I give them both letters of commendation for what they done. And that's just part of their everyday job. Thank y'all, appreciate it.
Okay, chief, thank you. Wade Phillips?
Yes. Just some brief updates on a few projects. The new public safety building, if you've been out in the strip park road, you'll see earthwork is moving along nicely. We've had a decent stretch of weather, so it's going to make good headway. And next week, next Tuesday, we'll actually be up and in bed on the vast majority of the remainder of work. So going into council meetings next month, we should have a much better idea of where we stand on budget and what changes we might need to be making. I talked to our construction manager earlier today, and as we gone through the bid process, we got a lot of good feedback from some of the potential subcontractors and different peoples where if there's a need to look at some changes to shape the budget, we've got some opportunity to do that once we see the numbers. Also, on Goblin Drive Phase One, I had a design review meeting, actually earlier today, with the designers that I'm working with. Progress is moving on actually quite well. We should have 100% of plans by the end of January. I'm expecting to get right-of-way easement documents for the work here in about three weeks. So that'll give me a couple of months to make sure we tie down all the right-of-way easements that we need to do for this phase and project. We're still looking, you know, being able to bid this out first quarter of next year, probably towards the end of the first quarter, but have it lined up and ready for construction once we hit summer. And then... I see we already got the... We touched on leak pickup, so that's coming up later. I think that did us... Anybody have any questions?
Doesn't look like it, Wade. Yeah, thank you. Chief Lowery?
Good afternoon or evening, everyone. Everybody should have the reports in the Google Drive. I'll give a brief overview of what we've done this month, October, and then any questions. I'll go from that. In the media risk reduction division, they've been working pretty hard on clean premise and inspections as well. And as the mayor likes to see, we like to clean up our cities, so we've been working on that. One thing I would like to remind everybody, and then in January, we started business license over again, so those will be due in January. On the operations side, typical month, we did run a little bit out. One call in particular was a Swiftwater SUV down in Duke County. We went down, took Mary Jean's boat, and didn't have to use it, but we had it there just in case. A couple of guys actually suited up and walked out and got the guy off the car. So it was a good save, and we glad to get him out of there safely. We did run several calls last month on the sewer smoking, believe it or not. The smoke would get in the house, and people calling out when one thing in their house is on fire, rightfully so. And we respond, check it out and make sure everything's safe. So that would kind of have been interesting few days there. One of the last things I want to mention to you all is that we were... We got hit pretty hard with the COVID back in October. We... There for about a week and a half, we had almost an entire shift gone because of it. So not going to move, we're all back full staff from that, and hopefully we can continue to keep it that way. Does anybody have any questions? Thank y'all.
All right, chief. Luke?
Yeah, I don't have a huge report right now. Of course, you all know the last three weeks, I've kind of been tied up with CARES Act and stuff. We'll touch on that a little bit later. I did want to let you know that our USDA grant for the police cars is finalizing. Good news there, so we should be receiving about $21,000 on that grant. As kind of a reimbursement for those cars, so good news there. Other than that, I think most of the stuff I'm going to touch on will be later on in the... Excuse me, committee assignments.
Okay. Thank you, Luke. David Wilson, you with us?
He's out of basketball, sir.
All right. Chuck? We'll have Chuck in person.
I just want to give you a quick update on basketball. It's going great. Haven't had any problems yet with teams having to drop out, so knock on wood on that. But it's going great, and like I said, our numbers were up. Another thing is great news. We were... I know the CATPC committee knows a lot about this because we've been working on it for two years, but we were able to find Topsoil to fix our infields that we're fixing to start working on those. We started the blocks on the bathroom project at the Wonder Willow project yesterday. So we're hoping that gets completed with the weather pending pretty soon. And I'm trying to think of anything else we got. I guess it's a big night tonight, so I'm just anxious for that. But other than that, that's about what we got going on, and everything's going pretty good right now, so...
Okay, stick around.
Thank you, huh?
Okay, is Shonda with us? All right. Well, before we jump into the committee meetings, if anybody's watching on Facebook, I want to again let y'all know that we're all distanced up here. We have people in the audience right now. They're wearing their masks, every one of them, but they're also distanced. So I mean, because you're distancing, if you want to remove your mask, you're free to do so. But that's your call. All right, let's jump into the biggie right off the bat. You have a new contract there in front of you. You received one earlier in the week. There were some last-minute changes that needed to be made, and they're highlighted there for you. The... We're just so excited about this. All week long, we've been touring different groups. Some of the city council people showed up, the media showed up. And it's just been... Every time we go over there, we like it even more, and we kind of come up with other ideas of things we can do. Chuck is just loaded with things he can get going, so... You know, it really wasn't that exciting months ago, but right now, it's real exciting, so... We have a contract, and then we have an ordinance. And Joel, if you want to... Somebody want to speak to it?
Yes.
Mr. Magnus?
And the reason I'm stepping up here is, as most of you know, I currently serve on the Harrison District School Board as well. And we had our meeting earlier today to go over this. I won't be voting tonight, but I do want to make some comments to frame this transaction so that the general public and council, anyone else has questions, they know what's occurring here. And to start out, I would say that Dr. Pratt is here to answer any questions as well in regard to this, but it's pretty much wasn't his decision, it's the board's decision. And so I want to basically give you the frame of reference for this transaction and what the school has done over the last few years. So in 2014, the Harrison School District successfully passed a millage to improve the facilities at the Harrison Middle School and Harrison High School. With that, upon that completion, we moved to transition students from the Harrison Junior High over to the current middle school facility. At that time, the school board had to decide what they were going to do with that property. The state considered that those assets underutilized, and that we really couldn't use them for educational purposes at the time without significant improvement. And in fact, the district, had they not moved, would probably have been in physical distress, facilities distress, I mean, in the coming years. So in any event, the school district successfully moved students over there, so we had to decide what to do with that property. At the time, we reached out and said, "Well, what if we sold it?" We had to get an appraisal. The state required us to sell it at the appraised value. We got an appraisal of 1.8 million. The superintendent was instructed to go out and find a sucker that would pay 1.8 million for the facility, and he couldn't find anybody for that. With that being said, then we went to the state and said, "Now what do we do?" And they said, "Well, after a reasonable time, since you haven't been able to get the appraised value, a sale at that amount or a transfer, that you can move to sell it." That time passed. And so then, the board said, "Well, let's try and divest of the property." It was an extended amount of time that we had virtually no activity. And so a couple of months ago, the city approached the school district with the opportunity to move this. So the city and the district have engaged into a contract after Dr. Pratt bought it to the... Brought it to the board. And the transaction, a lot of people, and even the newspaper, it's referred to as sale. It's not really a sale, it's a transfer of ownership of public property. There's a nominal fee associated with this, and the $50,000 is intended to offset costs that shall be associated with the contract and the closing and any incidentals, as well as the consideration by the seller for the continued use of the property. The school district will continue to use some of the property for a number of years until they decide what to do with other facilities. But again, I want to point this out, is a transfer from one entity to another. The state of Arkansas, for school properties, has a preference that those properties are used in a public manner. So their preference, rather than selling it to a private individual, is for taxpayers to get some sort of use. Since taxpayers paid for the assets originally, they prefer that the general public benefits in some other way from it. There are three statutes that cover this. So Arkansas statute 6-21-108, 6-13.111, and then 6-13.620. Each of those grants certain powers to a school board to move this. I myself called a former representative of the Arkansas Facilities Management, who said there, again, and the state will tell you that in the same manner today, they have a vested interest seeing school facilities used for public use. This is exactly the type of transaction that they prefer to see happen. For the school board, and I asked them specifically this question, they want to see the same students that used this facility in the past be able to use it now, and those parents and patrons. In addition, what has been described for use for veterans, the school could not do. A school district has to maintain a facility just short of full occupancy for students. That cost to the district was about $10,000 to $11,000 a month. Dr. Pratt and his team had reduced that to about $8,600 a month. But that being said, the facility continued to degrade with no one there, wasn't being used. In the future, we're going to have a very large expenditure that the city will not have, or anybody would not have, any other public entity. There is the cost of mitigation of some asbestos in the building, but it's nominal to the cost or the value of the property that will be obtained by the city and the citizens. So that being said, again, I won't be voting, but the school board voted unanimously with my abstention. Well, I did not vote in the meeting. Six oh. The school district voted to approve this sale, pending your approval. Dr. Pratt, anything you would like to add?
No, I think you're right on the money. We're excited, and again, I echo Mr. Magnus. We think it's a win-win for taxpayers and the public purpose.
Okay. All right, Mr. Magnus, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you for that great news, six zero. Let's see if we can top that tonight. I do want to comment that he referred to asbestos, and this is in the older part, and that's something we don't plan on using anyway. We'll have to secure that, make sure it's secure until a time that that whole area is removed. But for right now, we have great use for the gym. I mean, the spook house. We just... You weren't here when it was the spook house. Now you have... What do you call the place out on Goblin Drive? The arena. The arena. This is the spook house, and we're going to keep that around Harrison for many more years. So we're real pleased with that. I had a question for you that I wasn't able to answer today. I'm referring to the new part of the classrooms as the 1995. It just rolls off your tongue. I don't know if it was '93, '94, '95, or '96. Do you recall, Mitch?
Mr. Boswell would know. Didn't you serve on the board at that time, Mr. Boswell?
Easy, easy on the Mr. part.
Yeah?
I didn't hear the question, I'm sorry.
When was the new section next to the current... Or next to the gymnasium that built...
Probably took a couple of years.
I thought it was 1992, but I might be wrong.
No, it's not been that long ago.
How about '95?
I would say it's late '90s.
It's kind of nine, isn't it?
Late '90s, but at an exact time.
Okay.
I don't remember. We were able to do it by refinancing bonds. I remember that much because it didn't cost the taxpayers anything, the improvements that were done, if memory serves correctly, as far as new money. We saved a considerable chunk. Again, thanks to our good friend Dan Lovelady.
Absolutely.
And turned that money around and built that addition on to what I call next to the gym and that first wing when you go in to the main door.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, thank you. We'll figure it out, because I refer to that as the 1990-something section. You know, I hate to call it the new section. That's what it is. It's kind of like the new federal building. Well, the new federal building is what, 40 years old? So... And kind of the same situation over there. So we'll figure that out in the future. But I can't tell you how excited Chuck and all of us are for this opportunity. And I really want to thank the board, and I love the six oh. So if we... If you want to beat that, we need a motion to approve... Are we looking at the contract right now and then go to the resolution?
Yeah, I think we review the contract, see if the council or the public has any questions. At that point, if everyone is good, then the call for the vote would be to...
The resolution.
...approve the resolution, which authorizes signing the contract.
Anybody in the audience got anything you need to say? Okay, good.
I make a motion, and we do this.
Okay.
What'd he say?
A motion to approve the resolution as drafted, which approves and allows the mayor and Jeff Pratt to sign the contract as amended as is on your desk tonight.
I second that.
Okay. We got the two youngest people in the room making votes, Joel and Mary Jean. So we got a motion and a second discussion. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
I abstain.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Joel, I'm sorry, it didn't come through.
Yes.
Thank you. Wayne Cowan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Well, good.
Yes.
Hey, and that's seven to nothing. What was your score, six? Well, great job, guys. Thank you all very much. We look forward to it. Now, by the way, we realize there's a lot of work, and there is going to be further investment that needs to be made over there. But this is a great start, and nothing major at this time. You were looking at me like that, "Oh, what are you holding back?" And I will tell you, those stairs going down to the girls' locker room, you don't happen to know, but we were touring the other day and the lights were off. And there was a gas smell in there, so we had to hurry. And really, honest to God, there was a gas leak outside that we discovered, and we called the gas company right away. They came right out, but we were touring the gym, and we were going down to the girls' locker room. I had never been in there, and...
I haven't either.
They... It was dark, and we were moving quick because of the gas smell, and there are stairs, concrete stairs, in the girls'. And I went down, and I'm a little sore today because of that. So I... Hey, I could have sued you before we bought it. I never thought of that.
Mayor, next time, just ask where the light switches are.
But I did spill my coffee. All right, guys, well, thank you all. Thank you very much. That's a big deal. This is a big night, so... All right, Joel, you have anything else?
That's it.
That's enough. Let's go back to Mitch with finance. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Starting in finance, I'd like to point out that the financials are out there. Didn't have any questions in committee. I didn't know if there'd be any questions tonight. Once again, the deficit, right now, we're ahead of budget deficit by $105,000 in the general fund, and we're ahead in the water fund by 228. And those are the only two that are in negative deficit. So we've got three months left. We're hoping that we'll recover and that 105 will go away. We'll have to see what happens with 228. October is our best month, so our tax revenues, we'll have to see where we are there. So if there's any questions from the council in regard to the financials for September? Again, not on the agenda, but we want to make sure everybody's aware. Moving on to the budget. All we've had is budget. Again, we... General fund is a surplus of $12,301 for next year, which is fantastic. First time since I've been on the council, we'll have a balanced or surplus budget. The only concerns that I had, again, were... And Luke and I talked about it and recommended a 5% increase in the rates on water rates, given the reduction of the reserve. And that's baked into the budget as the current exists. So that's what we've recommended, that's what's in the budget. I want to go ahead and, before we do that here in a minute, tell you that we're going to go and ask for the motion now and a vote now so that he can prepare some of the stuff for parks and some other areas and get a month's jump. So with that said, I would make a motion to approve of the 2021 budget, with the primary concern being a 5% increase in water rate. Sorry.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Joel, Joel's second, and Mitch made the motion. Roll call, please.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Yes.
Linda DeWolfe?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cowan?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right.